I'd like to call this meeting together to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here. This is the City of St. Helena Regular City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. And I would like to, if I may, I see our supervisor, Diane Dillon, here. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please do, please.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the roll call.
Mayor Elswood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilor Coburnstein.
Here.
Chutou.
Here.
Knutson.
Present.
So we will move now to the public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern not on the agenda during public forum. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Is there any public comment at this point? And please ask folks to keep it to our four-minute limit.
I'm Anthony McKelley, 11/25. Cornella, this letter, or two letters, is all in your packet, so I'm just reading it so the public knows what I'm talking about. And I'm talking about the Streetscape Plan that we have upcoming. I want to talk about the upcoming Streetscape Plan. You're planting, in my opinion, the wrong trees. Last week, I went to Vanuins Nursery in Napa and talked to the tree guy. He told me these trident maples can grow over 25 feet tall. Within 15 years, they could start lifting the concrete or the sidewalk. They need to be watered for five years, or the ends of the leaves will turn brown, and, you know, we are in a water issue here. I asked, what is a better tree to plant? He said crepe myrtles. They need only water the first year, they have smaller leaves, and do not grow as tall and have great color. We have crepe myrtle in our parking lot at 1336 Oak, and I would invite the council to go there in late spring, early fall, to see all the colors of the trees. Those trees were planted eight years ago. And remember, what's above ground is below ground in the root system. The bigger tree, the bigger down below. If you plant smaller trees, then we can show off our beautiful buildings. Right now, it looks like a jungle downtown. Our buildings are on the National Historical Register. The oldest standing building is Cartering Company, built in 1875. Our building was built in 1890. These tall trees wreck the awnings by either dropping limbs through them or discoloring them with mold due to the shade factor of the trees. If you plant smaller trees with colored flowers, they would offset our historical buildings. Also, building owners would put up maybe more awnings for shade. But what is the point if these taller trees are just going to wreck them again? You cannot even see our historical electric layers or the light they provide. This past winter, our roof drains, and we're at 1351 Main, plugged up twice because of leaves on the roof from your trees. We have screens over our drains, but they still didn't prevent the leaves from plugging the roof, causing two leaks in our building. In the past, the tree in front of our building has plugged our sewer twice. It's plugged up sewage back in the building. It cost us over $5,000 to fix the problem. And an old bakery next door had the same problem, but they spent $20,000 to fix this problem. The trees, the first go-around, as these buildings were, when planted, they planted them directly over the water and sewer lines. I hope in this next go-around, you at least plant the trees between our sewer and water lines. And when we dug up a sewer to replace it, I found a four-inch gas line tangled in the tree roots. Fortunately, I was told by PG&E, it's low pressure. It runs a full length of Main Street on the west side, and it took Public Works over a week to remove the tree in front of our building. The reason: the tree was so tangled in our root, our water and sewer system, it had to be done by hand. So I think the timetable you have for this project is going to take much longer to remove these trees. And I know I'm going to run out of time, but the council has this anyway. But the main thing I wanted to get at is that, is the council, this next go-around of these trees, because you're choosing these monstrous trees, are you going to pay for all the damage they cause? Such as plug sewers, plug water, roof drain plugs up, our facades, any awning damage? Are you going to take that responsibility? And I would really appreciate if you would schedule as agendatize them, so us property owners can come here and tell you that it's unfair for us to take the burden of something you're going to do that we may don't think it's in the best interests of us. And because I see in this Streetscape Plan, you have money for facade replacement and all of that. You wouldn't have to do any of that if you, in my opinion, planted a lower tree. And when I grew up here in St. Helena, there was no trees on Main Street. And I don't know why, we got to be a jungle now. And the city's cutting trees down all over the place, taking them all down in McCullum Park, they took all the ones for your toilet on your parking lot, which you didn't have to take any of them down if you would have put the sewer an easier place. But that's the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Welcome.
Hello. Diane Dillon, Napa County Supervisor. I am here tonight because it, for two reasons. One is that I became aware that you had declined to, and for all your own good reasons, participate in the Sub-Rena process, the subgroup process for the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs And it occurred to me that maybe you weren't aware that I am the county's representative, meaning county, all five cities in town, and county on that committee, the elected representative. And Vin Smith from the Planning Department in the City of Napa is the staff representative, accordingly. And that's the way that that committee is set up, that works at ABAG. And so I thought I'd just come for the benefit of the public, and maybe for you all, too, tonight, to explain what we're doing and to let you all know that I'm available as a resource for what's happening at the committee. We're meeting nine times. We started in October, we end in June, once a month, in either Oakland or San Francisco. It's a large committee because there's nine, 18 county, 18 county Little C representatives for the nine counties, and as well as a number of people from special interest groups, I'll call them, from the unions, from the construction industry, from people representing access and functional needs groups, from different socioeconomic groups, and so forth. So it's a large committee, and we spend about the first two meetings in October and November, and even into December, talking about process. It's a little challenging. So what our job is to do is there's a number, a number like 300,000, some number like that, that will be given to ABAG, of which we're all apart, the nine Bay Area counties, the 100 cities. And that number comes from the Housing and Community Development Department in the state. It's their forecast of what growth is needed in terms of housing, what has to be planned for in what is the sixth cycle of this effort. This has been going on, there've been five previous cycles. This cycle is planning for 2022 to 2030. And so that's called the RHND, R-H-N-D, the Regional Housing Needs Determination. They determine, up in Sacramento, what is needed due to population growth, job growth, and so forth in the region. Our job at our committee level is to come up with a methodology, the formula, if you will, by how that number, I'll say it's 300,000, is going to be divided between the nine counties and the 100 cities. In our case, in Napa, as well as two other counties, we have elected to form a subregional group. The people in the subregional group will have their share of the number decided among themselves. So hypothetically, if the number for the five cities and the county is 2,000 new housing units, St. Helena will get its own number, Calistoga will get its own number, and then Yountville, American Canyon, City of Napa, and the county that have all elected to be in the subgroup will be duking it out, sort of, not duking it out, discussing how we're going to allocate our number. So I just wanted to give you that overview and to let the public know that that's the process in which we're engaged. It starts with five factors. There are five things. We are objectives of state housing law we have to consider. There are 14 factors we have to consider in creating this formula. So it's pretty complicated and a lot of nitty-gritty, and hopefully, we'll get the big number. We do this without, we do this, thank you, without knowing what the big number is. And then we get the big number from the state. They're telling us in April, and by which time we'll have different methodologies proposed. Are we going to focus on jobs? Are we going to have a higher emphasis on transit and so forth in determining how the number's allocated? And I'm happy to share a lot more information with you, which I have, anytime, individually or however you please. So just wanted to share that much with you. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And I was actually able to go and sit in on the RENA meeting this morning to get some more information, so I'll check in. I do appreciate it. Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the council here, and we will move into reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. And I will begin with our city attorney.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
Very good. Our city manager?
And we did have a closed session tonight on labor negotiations, and there's no reportable action from that, from that closed session.
Very good. Thank you. Our city manager?
No report tonight.
Our finance department?
It's my bi-monthly reminder about the new bi-monthly billing cycle that has started for our utility billing department. So the first bill for the January, February bills will go out about mid-March, and feel free to contact our department if you have any questions.
Thank you. Our city clerk? Our planning department?
Our zoning code stakeholder interviews are going really well, and we completed the general ones last week, the planning commission this week, and hope to meet with most of you on Monday. So thank you.
Thank you. Our public works department?
Thank you. Just want to announce that there was some additional tree notices behind this current city hall location that had been noticed before, but if you hadn't seen them, they're back up again for some more of the storage needs that are behind the building. In addition, Civic Gas and Electric is working on the tower replacements, as was noticed earlier last year, but there was a new notification gone out today from PG&E, just making sure people are aware, because it seemed like a surprise to some of the residents. So I just want to make sure the community does know that they're working on the Madrona, Hudson, and Spring Street area.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Knutson?
No update.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Are there any reports from the police, fire, or parks and rec? No. Thank you. Mr. Knutson? Ms. Chutou?
I'll report quickly on the climate change countywide meeting that we just had. Since we were just out there, I could pull up the agenda, and we talked about addressing some low-hanging fruit first. And some of those ideas that are coming up right now are streamlining electrical vehicle charging stations. In St. Helena, we're already doing that. I felt really proud of us today. The first two items on here, we've already approved, because there was that. And then there's the deep green, which we've already done, and now the other three, with the cities and the county, three had, three still needed to do it, so they're going to. We're also going to learn from Yountville, which is exploring prohibiting use of gas-powered blowers and motors. We're going to see how that goes for them and then learn from them, and then also explore prohibiting use of expanded, talking about food, the takeout packaging, and what can we do to reduce waste.
Thank you. Ms. Coburnstein?
I have nothing.
Mr. Doring?
Just wanted to make a request of staff. Given the limited rainfall that we've had to date and the capacity of our Bell Canyon to date compared to last year, I think it would be incumbent upon us to at least start the process of looking at whether a Phase 1 rationing program should be implemented. So I'd be looking to staff to maybe bring that back in a couple weeks or maybe a month to give a recommendation as to whether this is the appropriate time. And like last year, I made the same announcement, maybe even a little early, and then we got all kinds of rain in February, so maybe that's going to happen again. So, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
I'd hope council members to agree to that.
Absolutely. I believe it's prudent to look at that now, and hopefully that we get rain, and it is a moot point, but I think looking at it sooner rather than later, so I would support that. I have just a few things. First of all, I went to a service last weekend for Greg Marvin, who was a longtime teacher at St. Helena High School, art teacher, and really influenced many generations of people in this town, and I just wanted to recognize that. And it was a beautiful memorial with a lot of good memories, and he was a very kind person, and it was, it was, it was just nice to see that being recognized, so I want to mention that. This Thursday, I'll be going to the WIC, which is the Watershed Information Conservation and Conservation Council, talking about the County Groundwater Sustainability Agency that's being formed, and how we will start looking at how we monitor groundwater. Mr. Doring and I were at the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, NVTA, meeting recently, and talked more about the Ride Amigos ride-sharing program that's being promoted through NVTA, which I think will be an interesting program for more of us to get involved with. You can find out more about that on the NVTA website, or there's the app, the Ride Amigos app. I was at the Sabrina, the housing meeting today, and also at the, at the climate meeting with Ms. Chutou. So with that, we will move into our, our consent count, oh, I'm sorry. We'll go to our, I've seen no presentations and public recognitions. I'll move to our staff briefing. We'll go to item 7.1. This is Ms. Smithy's on the update on wastewater treatment plan.
Thank you. Yes, we received an update on Friday from the state Water Board regarding our draft concept plan, financial plan, that was submitted after the January 14th meeting, and they've accepted it with no formal changes at this time. We've also met or discussed with the USDA the design-build option and the loan documents needed to do so, and they recommend that we do not go that route, and we do the standard design bid process. They have boilerplates for a design bid process. They do not have those for design-build, so it may take months for attorney review. So we'll be bringing back a recommendation to council in the near future on whether amending the current consultant's contract to do the design in-house. They believe they can do it, and keep the schedule on for a final plan, design, engineering plans by August. So we'll try to fast pace that and bring it to council in the next two meetings, at least, to keep them on track. I believe that's the only updates I have at this time.
And does that still move us along the line towards tertiary treatment?
Correct. It's still the same plan, it's just getting a more performance spec in place that gives enough to the contractor to build the project based on a plan and spec approach versus a design-build approach.
What's the estimated length of time for construction? I mean, when, if things keep moving on the calendar that you've got in place, when will we actually have a new plant?
We have a deadline of, I believe it's January of 2023, to be in full compliance, up and running.
Okay. And it seems achievable that we can meet that deadline, given the calendar we're on?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And this new approach, cost-wise, in the same, or will know more soon?
We think it may be in line with what we've already proposed with the financial plan, nothing greater, as far as the design approach, engineering it now versus having the contractor onboard.
Okay. Any other questions? So we'll move on to our item 7.2. This is the Upper York Creek Dam Project Update, and also by Ms. Smithy's.
Thank you. The reviews of the pre-qualification of bidders has been completed. We haven't posted the results yet, but nine out of the 10 contractors that submitted are looking good, solid, qualified contractors, so that's a good, good bidding climate to be in. They're all excited about getting this project, going out to advertise officially in a couple of months. I hope to have the official posting up tomorrow. And in addition, we should have a response to comments for all the permits that we received comments on in the last month, and I believe we'll resubmit those this week. We have a strong approach with it, and the plans, we haven't had any major comments to the plans. It's more with the monitoring for the permitting agencies that they want to look updated, so, and seek modifications on, so that's good news. If there's not major comments, we could wrap up the final plans, get the specifications completed, and hopefully be on ball and get out to advertise by end of March, early April.
Any questions from council? Okay. We'll move on to our consent calendar. I will read off the numbers, and I believe we'll have to pull one at the end here. So if any members of the community or council may ask that a item be pulled, otherwise we will use one motion to adopt all recommended actions. I'll start with 8.1.
Yes, please.
Pulling that. 8.2.
Yes, please.
8.3.
Yes, please.
8.4. Okay, I'm going to get to 8.5 here. This is something I have to read aloud, but we won't pull it. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution. One, approving amendment number one to the updated employment agreement, STH Contract 2019-092, entered into as of May 28, 2019, between the City of St. Helena and John Sorensen, Fire Chief, increasing hours of work from 16 to 30 hours per week, and adjusting work days to a three, 10-hour-day shift structure effective February 26, 2020. Two, in accordance with the requirement of California Code, Section 595.3(c)(3), approving the recommended final action for the Fire Chief that provides that the annual additional, that the additional 14 hours per week increases the annualized base salary to $132,600, establishing the local government fire and emergency base hourly rate to be $85, and the average actual rate to be $91.50. Four, increasing prorated fringe benefits of vacation accruals, holiday pay, and executive leave from 2-5 to 3-4. Five, duly adopting and approving publicly available pay schedules in accordance with the requirement of California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5, to include the new annualized salary for the Fire Chief. And six, approving a budget increase of $27,730 to Fire Department salary and benefits for the increase of hours from February 26 to June 30, 2020, and use of general fund unassigned reserves of the same. That's item 8.5. 8.6, and 8.7, and 8.8.
I need to recuse myself from 8.8.
Okay.
And I wondered if you would mind doing that first, and I'll step out.
Okay, so we'll do that first. We'll pull that, and if you want to step out. Okay, this is item 8.8. Consideration and proposed adoption of a resolution sustaining the decision of the Planning Commission denying a demolition permit and design review filed by Jenny and Nick Vitro for the property located at 1443 Stockton Street. So is there any discussion from the council on this item?
I just wanted to put on record that I have watched the council meeting in full when they discussed this, as well as the Planning Commission meetings.
Okay. And is there any public comment on this item? Bringing it back to the council, if there's no further comment, I would invite a motion?
Oh, wait, I would do my thoughts.
Oh, yes, certainly.
Since I didn't have any thoughts before.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me pull up my notes. So when I went down the street, I, I, I think that there, that we're now looking at it, that the second-story issue, I thought I saw a second story, like for houses down. And I'm concerned with the idea that we're, that this house was half of what they could have built, and now we're starting to say that, even though our code says a certain amount, and they did half of it, that we're making the determination that it was still too big without setting anything, not telling people or giving them guidance for what that could be. So.
Any thoughts from the?
Well, I have to say I agree with that, which is why I voted as I did at the council meeting. I think we are not giving any direction that helps people, and I also thought we are, the area that we are willing to look at as an immediate neighborhood is so small, it's going to make it very difficult for people to be able to figure out if it's worth going to the trouble of paying for plans and bringing them to the Planning Commission and maybe ultimately to the council.
And what's really interesting, in the code, there's this Section B that we have in there underneath the criteria that says the Planning Commission shall develop additional criteria for review of architectural and landscape plans. Such criteria shall be approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, and shall be designed to form a basis of understanding between project designers and the community on design objectives for St. Helena. That's already in there, so that's what we, but we haven't ever done that. And so as I understand, I asked our planning director, that's what we're moving to do, and I think that that's great, so that we all come to it with these understandings, because there, obviously, there were, there are strong community feelings about it. But I feel like it's not fair to do it now, just because of some, if people, you know, argue with it when we're doing such a narrow block, block by block. I don't know how we do that in the future. And I like the idea of having it be upfront, because to do it, to say block by block, you can't do a second story, then that will impact everybody's value on that block, potentially.
I would like to ask the planning director, we're beginning a series of stakeholder meetings, one coming up on Monday. Are these meetings going to be addressing these issues? Is this the plan?
And just to clarify, the meeting on Monday is particularly just for the council, as individual one-on-one meetings as you're available. But the intent of the zoning code update is to look at what are the problem areas currently in the code, and the lack of clear objective standards came up numerous times in our interviews with some of the stakeholders. And so, of course, we already knew that this was challenging just at the staff level. So I think a great opportunity for both the council and the Planning Commission would be in maybe the next month ahead, when we look to have a joint session to, you know, hear the feedback that came from the community about what the problem areas are, and then look at in terms of what relates to the design guidelines. Do we want to integrate that into the code and make them adopted, or should they just be standalone but objective standards that are clear for the community to follow? So there's some options that I think in a, in a joint meeting might be a great way to explore that further and also get the input from the community.
Okay, thank you. Are there any thoughts from the council? Mr. Doring?
I do agree that these applicants have been caught in the whirlwind of our process, and it's unfortunate. And I think the Planning Commission recognized that also, but also denied their, their application four to one. I tend to be deferential to the judgment of the Planning Commission. I voted to deny the appeal because I thought that, not that there was a two-story issue, but that the, the house was too large. It's more of a massing issue, and I still feel that way today. But I also recognize the issues that you raise, and I don't know where you draw that line in terms of people getting caught up in a sort of a changing regulatory environment. I feel a little uncomfortable with that, but I do recognize we need to tighten up our guidelines so that folks have more certainty in when they make their applications. But in the end, I do think that the house is too large when compared to the immediate neighborhood, and that's how I feel still today, so.
So you're saying, because I walked in, I was, it's like, when you're saying immediate, it sounded like the house right next door? You're judging it right there, because there's some big ones, two to eight, two stories, or maybe four was big. So what then is the determination for immediate, just right next door?
Not necessarily right next door. But, you know, across the street, in the back, to the sides, within, within that block, certainly. And I know it's a judgment call, it's a discretionary call. I, I trust that the, the Planning Commission was attempting to answer those same questions, and I don't feel comfortable saying, hey, you got it wrong. I don't see where the Planning Commission, as I always say, if they go off the rails, then there will be an appeal, and I'll take a look at it. Otherwise, we, I do believe that we have to trust our Planning Commission. If it was a three to two, or some kind of a split, or some, something like that, but it was four to one, and so that's kind of where I am, but I'm not really beholden to this issue. It's a close call. I indicated to the- I indicated to the applicants, if they sort of brought back some kind of an amended project that was slightly smaller, by about 400, 500 square feet, or whatever it is, that would satisfy me. I don't, you know, I don't want to play God here, but something that just minimizes it slightly. It's too bad that we're not able to do that in a process where there's not appeal. You know, I know it's de novo, we can kind of work through things at this level, but you know, we're in a weird process where we can't just kind of negotiate. But that was my recommendation, I was just one person speaking.
For me, one of the determining factors was the provision in the ordinance that the Planning Commission can only deny the design review if they found that the applicant failed to reasonably take the criteria into consideration. And I don't think that you could say that about this applicant. I think that they did look at surrounding buildings, they tried to provide some design, I don't know what I would call it, but stepping back the roof and the front porch, they tried to draw some of the elements of design from the neighborhood. And I think that while I respect the Planning Commission, I think they leaned too heavily on one of the criteria, and that's primarily the reason I can't support their decision.
I think the other thing, too, is that they didn't have the letter from the architect addressing each of the criteria, which we had the benefit when it came to appeal. I remember watching Lester, the Planning Commission Chair, Hardy, asked for that, and the architect was not at the meeting. And then we got that in a letter, where they went point by point. So that was the difference.
Is there a motion to sustain the decision of the Planning Commission?
So moved.
And is there a second? So, and you know, in the argument, in deferring to the Planning Commission and the four to one decision they made, with that, I will second the motion.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councilor Chateau.
No.
Councilor Coberson.
No.
So just to clarify what the decision is. Well, two points, really. So at the last meeting, and I checked with the city clerk to confirm this, the vote last meeting was to sustain, there was an action taken to sustain the Planning Commission's decision. So a two-two vote resulted, or a two-two vote tonight resulted in no decision, so that prior decision that you made is sustained without the benefit of the resolution. So the resolution did not pass, but the original decision that you made holds. So you did sustain the decision of the Planning Commission, so that remains in effect.
Okay, but the resolution?
But the resolution is not effective. So there is no resolution to support your decision.
Okay. And so, leaving it at that, where does that leave us, without the resolution?
That just leaves you with the denial, and the denial is based on the record that was before you when you made that decision.
Okay. Okay, so with that item, we'll bring Mr. Knutson back in. Okay, and now we will, I'll let you get seated there. We will look at a motion to pass the remaining consent items.
Except the pulled ones.
I'm sorry, except the pulled ones, yes. Which are items, I'm sorry, we have David, and 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3. So, Mr. Knutson?
Maybe we can just move the rest of them.
Okay. If you tell me what they are, I will move them. What numbers are that have not been pulled?
8.4 through 8.7.
Four, five, six, and seven.
So move, that we move the balance of the consent calendar, those items that were not pulled.
I second.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Coberson.
Yes.
So now with 8.1, I will pass over to Mr. Knutson.
Hi, I really only want to talk about this one, because I think this consultant to the city, the FA Bartlett Tree Expert Company, it was one of the best works that I've ever seen in terms of analyzing and assessing our tree canopy. I recommend all to our staff and citizens, it's really an impressive piece of work. And I'm happy for the additional budget that we're giving them to do the further work that we asked them to do, because this is, they did an exceptional job for us. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. And so, is there public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, bring it to council, and if there's no more discussion, ask for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Coberson.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. And now 8.2.
So briefly, this was part of the Parks and Rec Commission Committee yesterday that I have the pleasure to be the council-appointed representative to, and our Director of Recreation. Mr. Pitsley didn't talk about this, but I just want to say that they're doing an excellent job of finding the right vendors to efficiently and effectively deliver a great fireworks show for us. And so, once again, I want to do a shout-out to the staff on this one, because this was a, they looked at a bunch of different potential vendors for this, and I'm confident this is going to be a good show.
Any council comment? I'll open it to public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. No further council comment, I'll entertain a motion.
Without mentioning the name of the vendor, I will move approval.
Second.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Yes.
Coberson.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. And now item 8.3.
So, once again, thank you for indulging me, but I want to do a shout-out to the ATSC Committee and to the folks that have been very focused on getting additional outdoor bottle filling stations, and what this means for our city, both in terms of access for those with other disabilities, and as well as for making this truly a livable and walkable city. So thank you.
I wanted, oh, sorry, can I discuss it, too? I have a couple of points, I was going to pull it, too. I'm very excited about it, because of the water bottle filling station, it's going to be great, and there's going to be one in here, it says downtown, and at the tennis courts, and another location. And I also noticed right now, what was chosen was this army green color, and if you go to the website, there's some really fantastic colors. There's a bright yellow, there's a bright blue, there's silver, there's white, they look really good. So if there was any other interest, I already ran it past our Director, Erica Smithies, if we could, if anybody else wanted to support it, I wondered if we couldn't ask Park and Rec, or maybe it's ATSC somebody, if we couldn't consider another color.
I would support that, yeah.
Okay. And they're also filtered, this water is filtered. In addition, it's going to be great.
Any other comment?
And it's free.
And it's free, that's right.
Just a question with respect to our budget for this item. I noticed some prior correspondence from Tobias, I think it was about a year ago, I may have said that to you when I was trying to push this along a little bit. It looked like there was $90,000 available, but then anticipated at that point, and I don't know if that's over two years or what that is, we're substantially lower than that. And so, it occurred to me, could we get another filling station in the Bocce area? That was asked of me by a constituent, and I said, well, we have, you know, and I recognize we may not be able to do all these in one year, maybe it's a capacity, maybe we have to roll them out slowly, and maybe the idea is to, maybe next year there will be more of these. But if the budget provides for that much money, and I don't, I should have asked you this beforehand, and it didn't occur to me until now, could we expand that number beyond six this year, or would that be something that we don't have the capacity to do?
All good questions. We selected the five one, because we had the need for the Lyman Park, and then downtown restrooms, five, there's five this year. And we selected, I believe, the one at the tennis court is also the Bocce Park area, so it's that split area, and the skate park, so I believe, unless you're asking for an additional one. These were rolling out as far as the ADA transition plan. They were, they're considered a Level III priority, because we need to get accessibility to a lot of these. And these locations already have accessibility or have minor additions that need to be done to replace them. But we can certainly look at other locations that would be easily added, that aren't right on the pathway. Some of the past designs were just putting the, not thinking about accessibility around when you're on a trail path, so we could definitely look at programming more in the next fiscal year.
Okay. I commend the staff for looking at the budget and shopping around and trying to get the best deal for the city, saying any of that is good. But I also know that there's a need here, and the more of these stations that we can provide, the better. I'm not a Bocce, I'm probably the only person in St. Helena that's not a Bocce ball person, sorry, you know. But I recognize a lot of people go there, and I was thinking, maybe one or two there, maybe David could speak to this, or they can speak to this at the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I'll leave it to your discretion, but we need to get more of these down, you know, if not in this budget, the next year's budget.
It would be nice to probably budget maybe five a year, if we can. Some of the locations that need more pathway improvements are going to cost a little bit more, that's probably why you had that 90,000 for five, because they talked about adding the concrete pads. In addition, if the direction tonight is to move forward, do you want us to come back to council, or go with the selection of color that the Parks and Rec Commission provides?
Mr. Doring, do you have any thought on that?
I trust the Commission to make a good decision for our community.
Same, and the green is fine, too. I just, when I saw the options, I at least wanted it to be explored.
So, in terms of the Bocce versus tennis, you know, the restrooms are sort of between the tennis and the Bocce, and I was hoping that the tennis one would be sort of at the tennis courts, and so therefore, I think Mr. Doring's suggestion that we also have one, because there's an existing fountain closer to the Bocce, that having two different, because it's really, you know, that may be only 50 yards between the two courts, but they, people don't move past that restroom. And so, having something closer to the Bocce, folks, and closer to the tennis courts, would be fantastic. And I think because there are already drinking fountains there, from an accessibility perspective, it may be easy to do, but maybe it's not.
I would support looking at that, if it's possible to look at that possibility within our budget.
We could probably do it in the budget, but the purchase order here is for a certain amount, so we'd have to expand on that purchase amount.
So if we move forward with what we have, and then?
Well, or could we divide by five and multiply by six, and therefore allow a larger purchase order? I mean, it's not hard, right? And it doesn't have to come back in front of us.
Mr. City Manager, can I ask for a little guidance?
There's adequate funding. The other consideration, I think, also was, and I may be confusing this with the prior one, but there may be additional money that we want to put in for additional conversations that go beyond just the installation. But we can add money, there are additional resources available.
I'd be supportive of.
The unit cost, I believe, was 6120.
Ms. Coberson, did you have a?
I mean, is it possible for us to approve this with the caveat that you're authorized to negotiate for an additional water filling station near the Bocce, and add the money
You can delegate those already.
Sounds like a motion, Mary.
Okay, I assume.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to open the public comment, seeing none, I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council now.
Okay. Well, I hope you captured that. I move that we approve the recommended action, but we modify it to authorize the city manager to add an additional water bottle filling station over near the Bocce courts at the price, the bid price. Does that work? Erica, you're late.
I would add one recommendation for the fiscal impact of it, and putting it not, it would be roughly about 44,000, but to cover any incidentals, possibly additional shipping.
Right, I assume throwing one more in at the last minute might not come out at the exact same price that the original five went in, so.
My recommendation would be for not to exceed amount of 40, one additional for not to exceed amount of $45,000.
That's good.
Okay, I see a thumbs up over there, great. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Coberson.
Yes.
Chateau.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes, and with praise for staff for bringing this forward, I think this is a really great step, so thank you. Okay, we will move now to our public hearing, seeing none, we'll move to old business. This is item 10.1, our first item of old business, Financing Civic Infrastructure Task Force Update. This is with Chair Tom McBroom.
Hi, Tom.
Thanks for being here.
Mr. Mayor and council and city staff, thanks for the opportunity to bring you up to speed on where we are on the task force, which was formed, as you may recall, to help evaluate the choices in front of the city involving major future capital improvements. We're talking about City Hall, Police Station, as well as unfunded or underfunded infrastructure that we need to maintain, things like our storm sewer system, and to do the streetscape. So, we formed our committee two long weeks ago. We had our first meeting on the 12th of February, and we elected a chair. All the Navy training I had teaches you never to ever raise your hand. Didn't work, I became the chair, and George David is the co-chair. At that meeting, we also decided how to divide up the workload and eventually the report. And we have formed three subcommittees, four actually, including one that's going to write the report. And I thought I'd take you through what, how we divided the work up, and what those subcommittees look like. The first one, and probably the central one, is a Budget and Finance Group. And these are the people that are going to look at the CIP, the Long Range Financial Plan, try to see the impact of these projects that are coming down the line, and ways to pay for them. And so, they're going to look at the impact of City Hall design, fire station design, any civil engineering work we're going to do in substructure, and also how to pay for those, different options we might have to come up with the money to fund them, including things like TOT, sales tax, and property tax for proposed, or let's say, pipeline projects. These are projects we already know about that are somewhere in the pipeline, although the financing, the revenue financing for those, as I believe, are not in the long-range plan yet. Is that correct, Mark? I think that's right.
We've only modeled one potential hotel that's already been permitted, but we have not modeled in long-range financial forecasting any of the projects that are in design or in process.
Right, so we're going to do all the ones we know about. They're also going to estimate or bake in the ones that could come up from another committee, which is a Real Estate Development Committee. So the central one is a Finance Committee, they're going to look at the books, they're going to look at the long-range financial impact of the infrastructure that we're thinking about fixing or building or repairing, and they're going to look at the different funding options, including debt offering. May not want to do it, but it's going to, we're going to show it to you as an option. As well as the, get on to the next committee, which is a Real Estate Development Committee, we're going to look at the opportunities provided by developing city property. The three main ones that we're considering would be the current City Hall site, may be available for retail residents or hotel work, or use, rather, the Railroad Avenue property, which could be available, and the Adams Street property, which could be available. We just want to make sure, I know there's a lot of political interest, a lot of emotion evolved around some of those sites, and I would say only that our intent is to give you the figures. This is what a development of that site, or those sites, could bring in terms of incremental TOT, sales tax, property tax, and other benefits, even other non-monetary benefits. The last committee we have is an Engineering and Construction Group, and they're going to actually look at the proposed designs for the Police Station in the City Hall. They're going to review the programming that went into that, to make sure that we are proposing buildings that are what we need, but just what we need. They are going to review the construction cost estimates, to make sure that the estimates that you all are looking at- that you all are looking at are realistic. They are going to, and we have already met, I'm on that committee, we've already met with the Public Works Department this morning, as a matter of fact, to look at the, some of the underground infrastructure and what the investment might be required to fix the worst of the worst. To give you an idea, there was a storm sewer plan that was done in 2000, I believe, that basically said that in certain rain conditions, we need to, to accommodate that, we need to upsize some of our pipe system. A 24-inch pipe might, might need to become a 30, you know? That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about stuff that has collapsed and flooding streets, causing sinkholes, liability for the city, infiltrating the sanitary system and putting an overwhelming load on the sanitary plant. So we're looking at the, the critical underground repairs, not the stuff that could probably stay there for 50 years and never cause a problem. So we're beginning to try to define that. The last committee is the editorial committee. We are going to have a couple of our folks write the report, review it, review it with critical people before we publish, of course. So that's the way we're set up. I'd stop here and see if there are any questions.
Any thoughts from the council?
I just had a question. Did you say that you are going to be looking at other hotel projects that aren't official yet, but put that in the real estate subcommittee?
We are going to estimate, the, the finance committee, I think, is the people that, I think the real estate committee is going to look at the potential of developing available sites. I think the finance committee is going to dig into the, the TOT, property tax and sales tax projections for the proposals that are already in-house. That's not to say that they're all going to go through. We're not assuming they're all going to go through. But I think that before you start deciding which development options you might want to consider, you should certainly get a feel for what the likelihood is of incremental revenue from, you know, the projects we already know about.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any additional council questions?
Just on that issue, so I assume you're maybe going to project some timeline of when that revenue might come on stream, which includes the time it takes to get any necessary entitlements or amendments?
This is all a big calendarization drill because the, of course, the construction costs are also calendarized out over, you know, probably the full 10-year period or at least five years.
Okay.
And so it doesn't do you any good if you don't, if you, if you've got expenses going out in one year, but the, you know, the revenue is coming in three or four years later. So calendarization of expense, I don't know if it will be considered, yeah.
And were you able to draw all three of the so-called bench players into help with the subcommittees, or how are you making use of their...
These are the, the experts?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we have. We have a couple of, one in particular who is a kind of a CFO for hire, you know, who is Glenn Gelt, if some of you may know him. He's participating heavily on the finance committee. And I think the others are involved too, although I'm sure, yeah, I mean, we're perfectly happy to have all the help we can get. We're also looking back, we don't want to lose the work that was done in the SHAPE Committee and other prior committees. So we're going back there and seeing, I mean, there's tremendous work done. We don't want to do it over again if we don't have to. So we're just in the stages now of looking what work has been done before on the subject. We're spending quite a bit of time with Mark and his staff now, trying to make sure that we stay on target and don't, don't duplicate effort.
Thank you for volunteering for this assignment.
You're welcome.
Is there any additional council comment? I'm going to open it up to, to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience, seeing none, I'll bring it back. I would like to thank you very much, Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. And please pass on that thanks to everybody on the committee. Do you have...
I don't have any questions. I, I just want to thank you for your willingness to share your expertise with our community and for your willingness to serve as a chair. It's deeply appreciated by, I know, all the members of the city council, so thank you. And good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Doring. We have a lot of talent. I think the one thing, and certainly pressing company accepted, we have a lot of strong talent on this team. We have some pretty powerful people, and I think they are anxious to see if they can help.
This is sort of beyond my wildest hopes in the ideation phase of this, so I also am, I'm so impressed with the talent that we have in our town, and I appreciate that some of this is, some of it is being put to use in this area, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it'll be fun to work on, too.
Okay, thank you, and we'll be looking forward to further reports. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 10.2. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Title IX of the St. Helena Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.12, which is the curfew. And this is prepared by our police chief, Chief Hartley.
And Chief Hartley is here today, but this is simply step one in the repeal of the ordinance, and so we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the council? We know that we've had support for moving forward with this, so with that, if there's no, we'll open it to public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council and entertain a motion. I'm sorry, this is holding the first reading, right? This is, okay.
First reading.
Is there anything more than I have to read? Because I'm having a problem getting my iPad to open here.
You only have to read the title according to the, by title only.
I would recommend adopting by title only and waiving for the reading.
It sounds good. I'll, so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Councilor Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chuteau?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, item 10.3. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending section, chapter 10.20, Title X of the City of St. Helena Municipal Code regarding the establishment of weight restrictions on commercial vehicles using Pratt Avenue Bridge within the City of St. Helena. And this is our Public Works Director, Ms. Smithies.
Thank you. As everyone's aware, on, on special meeting on December 12th, city council adopted a resolution expressing safety reclamation to the Napa County Board of Supervisors related to Pratt Avenue Bridge opening, reopening. The intent was for the county to continue to work with the city to study the traffic conditions and potential safety limitations of the Pratt Avenue and Silverado Trail intersection, including weight restrictions on commercial vehicles on the bridge and the need for flashing advance warning signs on Silverado Trail. On February 11th, County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution restricting commercial trucks over five tons from utilizing Pratt Avenue Bridge. That won't go into effect until the city adopts a similar ordinance. And the county's in willingness to install and maintain flashing beacons on Silverado Trail that the city will purchase on, on that behalf, partnership as we did on, on Silverado Trail and Pope, Pope Street area. So in addition, there may be questions on traffic calming out there. The city, before they reopened, went ahead and moved forward with putting in speed signs that have been calibrated, and our police chief's department have been regulating and doing patrols out there regularly determined because it has reopened, checking for violations and speeders. He may speak to that. But we are moving forward, and the item before you is to, to have the first hearing and if there's any questions or modifications to the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any initial questions from council?
I just don't see how this covers the purchase of the signs and the installation this resolution.
The purchase of the signs are within our operational budget, so we can already, and I realize there's an error catching from a prior resolution about the resweeping the bridge. It's already reopened, there's no need for that. But it's, it's small enough amount of money to already fund and within the city's street budget.
When I read it, I thought this, putting up the signs would create some debris you would sweep after.
Any other council comment?
Yeah, I had a question. One of the outcomes of our series of meetings in the fall, and we're graced with Supervisor Dillon's presence here, but I know that the county was going to be looking more closely at a traffic study regarding Silverado Trail and the Pratt intersection, regarding sort of the accident data that we had surfaced that hadn't been available to them. And I wonder if that's, you know, we've done a little bit here, but do we need to agendize this again to see what sort of the progress has been made on the county side?
They only have the reports that they had when, 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 our police chief can answer that, Chief Hartley, but when we assist at a site, we write down when we were called out to assist. If they choose not, the county or the CHP chooses not to do an accident report, that's out of our jurisdiction. There's something that we can do on our end to, to write down additional details, to continue to monitor the safety, since we are usually the first responders to that intersection. That's all I, I think that we can recommend this time unless Chief Hartley has other recommendations he can bring to the podium.
Council might correct me if I'm mistaken, but I thought an outcome of that particular emergency meeting that we held at Old City Hall, which is now closed, included some commitment by the county to continue to further investigate because we had such different accident data. Am I wrong about that?
I don't recollect any continuing. I thought it was just to try to reconcile the reports that the county had and that we had, and I believe they came up with two accidents over a number of years, but I don't think we requested any ongoing traffic study.
I, I thought that's, I'm sorry, I can't recall his last name. Who was the county official that was here? Steve?
Steve Letterer. He's the Public Works Director.
Right, so I thought he had made a commitment to us that he would investigate further because I think we'd had 20 accidents that were listed in this three period of time where they had two, and so that's a pretty big swing.
I'm going to ask Chief Hartley to come up if there's any...
I can speak on that after that emergency...
Can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
It's a long walk. After the emergency meeting, I attended a city, or a county council meeting, and Mr. Letterer had mentioned during that meeting that he'd recontacted CHP and they could not provide him any further information. And that's where it rested, is that there still remains to be a difference between the, our responses for mutual aid at that location and the, what CHP or the Napa County Sheriff had documented.
Okay. Ms. Chuteau?
Well, I can, it's, it's in our, attached to the agenda in the Board of Supervisors' letter on February 11th, 2020, on page two. It says in parentheses, under background and discussion, "There are only three documented accidents at the intersection within the past 12 years, and none of those was a, oh, and one of those was a drunken driver."
And I know of two right now that happened within the last four or five years that one resulted in a fatality, and another, which I responded to and made an arrest on, was a DUI crash on that bridge. Both of those involved alcohol.
With a car turning onto the bridge?
The, the one where the driver was arrested, he had turned onto the bridge and collided in the middle of the bridge. The second one, people were leaving town towards Silverado Trail and actually hit the tree right before the bridge.
Nice. So Chief Hartley, this is fascinating. I mean, you passed out, I remember at that emergency meeting, sort of a list that had, I believe it was 18 to 20...
Correct.
Calls that were at that...
Mutual aid calls or calls for service at that location.
And I know that there's no, like, okay, here's the definitive list. There's a CHP list, there's a county list, there's our list. Maybe it just gets dropped at this point in time, but I'm pleased we're doing the, the weight limits. I just would love further traffic, and I, it'd be great to be able to communicate to the county or to continue the discussion with the county regarding signage and flashing lights and other aspects that I think are critical. You know, the road, of course, at Silverado Trail is striped double yellow throughout the entire interchange. So, you know, it'd just be great to, I think, I just would like, it'd be great to have some sort of clarity that this is a concerning intersection. If we have further issues there, it'd be great to even do further signage. I think that's all, you know, I mean, the proof is in, I remember what council member Chuteau said, is that if we have data, if we have further data, and right now we have data in the past that none of us can agree on, but if we have further data that shows what, you know, that bad things continue to happen or are happening in the future, we should be able to, I hope we have an open channel with the county to be able to discuss that.
Perhaps this is, if I could ask Supervisor Dillon, you know, if we look at this as an opportunity for the future, this is one example, one, you know, one area, but working together, this conversation between the city and the county and that sort of data sharing and, and making sure we have a process that, that everybody feels that we're getting the clearest, newest data, is, is a continued conversation with Mr. Letterer, perhaps the best conduit? Supervisor?
I think the best conduit, I can bring it up, I have a chief, chiefs, county chiefs meeting in Napa next week, and I can bring it up there with the sheriff and our local CHP commander.
Great.
And see where those statistics are at.
Because it may surface on this issue, but also in the future on other issues where there's a, a sort of an interface.
Absolutely.
And what is so helpful is the detail, because knowing that, like, the driver hit the bridge, it wasn't a turn and left, really helps for when we're being asked to think about these decisions, if that's possible.
So any other council thoughts on this? Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll open the public comment if there's any public comment. Thank you.
So at the county, as I know you do here, we strive to make evidence-based decisions. And we don't keep stats. The sheriff doesn't, the sheriff's responsibility on roads is, well, the sheriff doesn't have responsibility on roads the way that police do in the city or CHP does on Silverado Trail and so forth. And I think, I've had many people say, oh, the sheriff should control motorcycle noise on Silverado Trail. That's a CHP job, not a sheriff job. So I'm, I'm, not that Sheriff Robinson, Robertson isn't interested in this, he is, but, so in keep, in terms of keeping statistics, we rely on the CHP for county road statistics. When the CHP gives us a, a report, and I don't know if that's what the report was that you had before with the list of 17, they generalize the location. So for instance, an accident that's at Silverado and Pratt, and I've been reading these reports for many years now, doesn't mean it happened at Silverado and Pratt. It means that that was the closest intersection to where it occurred. So an, an accident could be on Pratt, between Pratt and Deer Park, but if it was two inches closer to Pratt, it gets reported on their list as at Silverado and Pratt versus Silverado and Deer Park. And so that's the initial list. And what it takes is really drilling down and looking at the actual accident reports, which again are not in our possession. I know that Ms. Smithies is a little busy, and it's a giant job to do, and that she and Mr. Letterer had been trying to get together on this. Our anecdotal evidence that we had did not indicate that there were actual accidents, a significant number caused by people turning left onto the bridge. Why we really care about drilling down and getting the actual detail as to what caused the accident is because when we go out, when any jurisdiction, you, us, any local government, goes out and sets a prohibition at an intersection, and we use a certain standard, like two left turn accidents in 10 years, we are then put, I'm looking over at council, we are then put in the position of defending why we didn't do that at every intersection where there were two accidents in 10 years from a left turn. And anecdotally, I will suggest that no one could maybe do a left turn in Napa County if that was the standard that we applied. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but it's certainly not a threshold that caused, that our Public Works wants to go to, because we need our circulation system as it exists not to be diminished unnecessarily. We were not given any record of any fatality being caused by a left turn onto the bridge. So that's the evidence that we have to work with. And Mr. Letterer spent a great deal of time drilling down into the detail of, of those drilling down into the detail of those accidents, not, you know, first culling out, did they actually occur at the bridge, and then the second thing being, what was the detail? And on that basis, he could not make a recommendation to us that we should use that as a standard for prohibiting a left turn. Looking at the bridge, looking at the angles, he could make a recommendation about prohibiting certain-size truck vehicles, and I know he conferred with Ms. Smithies about that as well. So, that's the recommendation he made to us, which we approved. So, and maybe that helps with the background. This, there is a lot of interaction already on all of these issues, Mayor, and this one just took a little longer, but I think we have a good outcome.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for bringing clarity to this. So with that, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Supervisor Dillon. I really appreciate your thinking on that. I would really hope that moving forward, it was one of those things where counsel, we discussed this for, you know, it was, it was agendized, we discussed it over and over again, and I think there was a disconnect between sort of county decision-making and city decision-making, and since we both sort of meet at Pratt Avenue Bridge, for us, we'd had a lot of citizens that were bringing this up. We'd had a lot of concern about it, and we'd had some accident data that maybe wasn't perfect, but I hope, moving forward, that what we, what we can do is to agree when accident data is available in places where the county and the city intersect, that we can share that and sort of work collaboratively in a way to ensure public safety. My only issue about the Pratt Street Bridge is that you would never engineer that today, and I get worried. I'm very worried about walking and pedestrian and bicycle inside our town, our lovely little town, and I'm concerned about driving in areas that are not, sort of substandard, and when you add to that alcohol, which sometimes folks have, it just is concerning. And I don't want to over-worry. We have a free society, but I just, I want to make sure that our coordination, you know, as concerned as we were, it was hard for us to tell that the county was concerned. And I'm sure there's things that the county's really concerned about that up valley, for example, you came here tonight. Like, we were presented two weeks ago about the, about participating in this airbag thing, and none of us had heard of it before, and we're like, you know, we're not going to opt in, because we didn't know. So, part of this is sort of having the communication ahead of time, and so I'd really encourage us, and I want to thank Chief Hartley for really being on it in terms of trying to understand the accident data as well. So I'm sure between him and she, and Mr. Letterer and anyone else involved in the county, I really, I'm trying to encourage the county to spend time up valley to help understand our concerns here, because I think they are different from down-valley concerns. So, anyway, thank you.
So I think I had not closed the public, here, public comments section. So, seeing none other, I will close that and bring it back to the council. Are there any other thoughts before I entertain a motion? Or I will entertain a motion if there are no other thoughts.
I will move approval of the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure the staff recommendation is to have the first reading by title only and waive further reading.
A second.
Vice Mayor Dorian?
Yes.
Counselor Cooperstein?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. We will move to item 10.4. This is fiscal year 2019-20, second quarter finance report and consideration of resolution approving mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2019 and '20. This is prepared by April Mitz, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. As I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to come up, I just wanted, I do want to make a notation in front of you as an updated resolution for this particular staff report. Inadvertently, it is included in the staff report, but it was not in the, and it was included in the recommendations in the staff report, but it was inadvertently left off of the resolution, and that was adding a budget increase to 734-5027-2130, which is park impact fees for the Wapo Park improvements that were done. So with that, I will start with my, my presentation. Okay, so a quick overview of our general fund revenues. So you'll see on the left-hand side, that is what we've budgeted, and on the right-hand side is what we've collected so far. So you can see that we are on track for our revenues for Q, my apologies, that should say, that should say Q2 at the top. For sales tax, although it does say that 33% has been collected, that is typical due to the timing of our sales tax payments that we received. That includes any payments that we've received through October 2019 sales tax. Property tax, we did have a bump up, and we'll see that in our recommended action for, to increase our revenues for property tax, and that has to do with our one-time ERAF payments that we received, and we presented to council on December 10. And then TOT, that also includes two months that are listed for the revenue. So this is all revenues collected through December 31st. So our overview of our revenues for our general fund, these are budget revenue increases that we are recommending for the city council. The first item for property taxes, an increase of $50,000, and that just had to do with the updated numbers that we received from the county of Napa, and it was, I believe, September we received those numbers. The second item was the ERAF, the shift to state. That's one-time funds that we received. And we typically receive them every year, however, they're, they're not predictable on what the amount's going to be. So this amount was presented to city council on December 10 when we discussed the add-back, discussed the add-back program. So that is a recommended increase. Emergency relief, that is $27,000 that we know that we will receive for strike team reimbursements for this fiscal year. We do anticipate a few more coming our way, but we don't know if we're going to receive it in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. The next three items for the TOT, the TOT penalty and civil penalties, those are all increases due to a recent STR, short-term rental settlement that we received. Contributions for government, the $160,000 increase, this is for an SB2 grant that we've received that is for the housing element of the zoning code update. And then the final recommendation for revenue increase adjustments is $5,000 for Jingle All the Way, and that was to cover additional costs and additional staffing, and that's, that's an offset of increased expenses that we have versus the increased revenues. Our overall general fund expenses, this is a summary chart of those, are adopted, we're at $15 million, a little over 15. Our encumbered was $753,000. So what the encumbered amount is, and we, we decided we actually needed to highlight that for, for council to be able to see, I mean, you'll see that in one of our other charts, is the encumbered, those are funds that was approved by city council in 2018, '19. However, we didn't expend all the funds by June 30, so we call it a rollover in our encumbered amount. So when you see the adjusted budget, the adjusted budget of $15,593, that includes one-time budget increases council has authorized between July 1 and December 31, and it also includes those encumbered funds. So you'll see that bump up for the adjustment. Year-to-date, we spent about $7.6 million. We have spent about 54% of our budget and are available $7.1 million. So we are on track, with the exception of the few items that we're asking for budget increases for. Just a quick refresher of the add-back list for the general fund. This was, these were items that we created during the fiscal year 1920 budget process, and we did not have the funds at the time to present a balanced budget, so we created this add-back list. And we brought the add-back list back to city council on December 10. And at that time, the city council did provide direction for the following four items for the add-back list. The first was to fund, do an additional contribution to fund retiring medical, which is part of goal number four, and that was $64,000, and that had to do with the recent retirement of one of our police officers. Library roof repair, phase-two civic improvements, which is gold number, which is tied to goal number one, of $250,000. Regional climate initiative, which is part of our general plan, I'm allocating $15,000 for that. And then management review of the development process, which is in line with goal three, for an additional $30,000. So our budget increase expense recommendations that we are making tonight is, there, it's a total of $590,000. So the first is for $22,000, this is for REMF insurance. Following the adoption of the budget in June, REMF board meeting did, did vote, and it increased our rates, and we did not get that notification until August. So that's an additional $22,000 expense. For professional contracts, it's a total of $190,000. $160,000 of that is offset by the SB2 revenue increase that we've, that we're recommending. And then the other $30,000 is for the management study and the development review process, which is part of the add-back list. Jingle All the Way is $5,000, and that's to accommodate for additional purchases, and as stated, it was offset by additional revenues. Utilities, this is an increase in $33,500 for two different areas. One is for the parks, parks and the other's for buildings. And what that is, is when we developed the budget last year, when we developed the budget, it did not account for any budget increases with, that we had done, done at the time from the mid-year budget through the end of the fiscal year, and inadvertently, we did not include those in the budget. So we're asking for the increases, and in the development of the 2021 budget, we've already included that extra bump up. Primarily, that was due to the increase in our water and wastewater rates. For other contract services, we are recommending an increase of $10,000, and this is for dumpster rental to clean up, for a massive cleanup that they did over at Crane Park. There's two other items, they're both transfers. One is to fund 581, that's for the $64,000 to fund the retiring medical, and that was part of the add-back list. The second is the additional $250,000 for library roof repairs. And the last recommended item is a budget increase of $15,000 for the regional climate initiative, which is part of the add-back list. So where this leaves us with our general fund estimated net position? So we're looking at our ending fund balance as of June 30, 2019, is $7.9 million. Our estimated revenues is, and this includes our recommendations that we've made in, in this particular document, our estimated revenues is going to be increased to $15.6 million. Our estimated expenses is also $15.6 million. Our, our encumbered rollover, so this was the amount that has not actually been spent yet, is a $501,000. So that will leave our estimated unassigned net position in the general fund as of June 30, 2020, a three, or 7.6, or sorry, 7.3 million, which leaves us at a 45% net position in the unassigned reserve for general fund. For wastewater revenues, moving on to the wastewater side, between our budget and our adjusted, nothing has changed.
Talking about water now, right?
Yes, water. Did I not say water? My, my apologies, water. Yeah, this is a wastewater fund, that's great. No, it's a water fund. So, Q2, where we're at is $3.3 million, so we have collected 51%, so our revenues are showing on track for our water. Our water fund expenses, you can see in this chart, and the total expenses do include the purchase, the rollover purchase orders. So we are showing on track for our water fund expenses. We do have a few recommended adjustments as well. So the recommended adjustments for the water fund expenses totals $32,500, and they're for miscellaneous expenses. For government buildings, it's $13,000, and that's costs associated with the general maintenance of the water facilities. This amount was originally requested by the department for the fiscal year 1920 budget that we brought to city council. Inadvertently, this, this line item was left out, and so, and we've, we've recognized this about four months ago, but figured the best time was actually at the mid-year to bring it to, to city council. For the attorney, we're recommending an increase of $5,000. The adopted budget included $99,000 for professional contracts and $36,000 for litigation. During Q1 and Q2, funds have been transferred from professional contracts over to litigation, cost for costs associated with ongoing litigation. At this point, looking at the new budget structure or the new billing structure with BB&amp;K, we do feel like an increase of $5,000 for the professional contract side would be sufficient to make us, to get us through June 30. Water distribution, there are two items, or there's one item in here, it was $6,000 to cover the costs related to, additional costs that we took on related to the PSPS event, additional generators that we had to rent. Office supplies, it's $3,000 for new office equipment and some new furnishings for the corp yard. Maintenance, buildings and grounds, was $1,500 for additional work to the pump house. And then software, it's $1,000 for Adobe licensing for a new computer that we had to purchase. For water treatment, the recommended increase is $3,000, and that's for additional fuel costs due to the PSPS. For our water fund, for our estimated fund balance, you can see as of June 30, 2019, we have $3.6 million. Our estimated revenues is still the $6.557. Our estimated expenses with these budget recommendations is $6.59 million. Rollover purchase orders, $134,000, and that would leave us with an estimated unassigned net position of $3.4 million, or 51%. Like to move on to our wastewater funds. So we have our adopted budget and our adjusted budget for our revenues are identical, the $3.356 million. Q2, to date, we've collected $1.4 million, which is approximately 42%. As noted in our first-quarter financial report, this is slightly lower. And when we drilled down to see what the root cause of this, it was due to the water conservation by our non-residential customers. For this, we did include a fairly substantial transfer from, from wastewater fund balance over into our CIP project. So even with this lower collected amount, we are still anticipating we're going to be close to target, probably within the 90, 95, 96% tile, but we do know that we will still be able to make our bond covenants with, with this amount collected. For our wastewater fund expenses, again, this does include our rollover purchase orders. Our expenses, we are on track for our expenses, and we have very minimal recommendations for increases, for budget increases. So here is our recommended increases. So the first line item of the $16,150, that is the general maintenance of the wastewater facilities. And I do want to make a note that the general maintenance of the wastewater facilities, as well as the special department supplies, maintenance supplies and capital equipment, when we looked at this and we looked at the impact, impact fund account for wastewater, 15% of all, the total cost of those can be offset with wastewater impact funds. So you're seeing the other 85% as our recommended action, and when we get into all funds, you'll see the other 15% for these particular items. For government funds, again, that was the same situation as the general fund, which it was initially, and it was in the initial budget, but we inadvertently left it out, so we're making that request now. For the wastewater treatment plant, fines and penalties, for the $7,000 is for the additional costs associated with the alleged violations of discharge limitations at the wastewater treatment plant that was brought to city council, I believe, two or three meetings ago. We did budget $50,000 for that, and the actual cost came in at $57,000. Special department supplies, $5,900, and this is for cleanup of the wastewater treatment grounds. Maintenance supplies, $8,500, it's for the rental, the dumpster for the additional cleanup at the wastewater treatment plant grounds. And then the capital equipment, this was a budget increase for unanticipated replacement of a side-by-side utility vehicle, which is used to perform the permit compliance, the permit compliance maintenance of the actual spray fields. All that being said, the wastewater fund estimated fund balance, we, our June 30, 2019 actuals is $2.76 million. Our estimated revenues is $3.3 million. Estimated expenses is $3.1 million. The rollover purchase orders is $223,000, with the estimated unassigned net position of the wastewater fund at $2.7 million, which is 80% of the net position. It is also important to note that this $2.7 million does include a $1.15 million settlement that has not been transferred over to CIP for the wastewater treatment plant yet. So moving on to our other funds, these are recommended, recommended budget adjustments.
Sorry, may I just ask this question?
Absolutely.
So the, the settlement that hasn't been transferred over, that is now in the general fund?
It's in the wastewater fund balance, so it's living in wastewater fund balance. We will be transferring it over to wastewater CIP to go towards the wastewater treatment plant project.
Thank you.
Okay. So for our other funds, our recommended budget adjustment for the revenues, recreation registration, we are recommending a $30,000 increase in revenues, and then also other revenue for Jingle All the Way of $9,500, and this is due to the popularity of our recreation programs. So you will see that the offsetting recreation, recreation registration will be offset by expenses because of higher enrollment classes, so higher instructor costs. For our other funds, our budget adjustment recommendations for the expenses, the first is for 283, so that is for Tree City, it's $35,000 for the removal of the trees at 1572 Railroad Avenue, and that is taken from fund balance, so no transfer from general fund has to be done in any of these circumstances. The second fund is SB 1186, this is for $5,000 for training and conferences relating to ADA accessibility. ADA accessibility, and it's something that our building department does for us. We collect SB 1186 fees through our business license process. It's a mandated state fee and we are able to use those funds specifically for ADA trends, ADA training. For our garage fund, an increase of $7,500 and that was increase in fuel and oil costs that we've, that we sustained this year. Park impact fees, this is for professional contracts for $15,800 and this is an increase. What this was for, it was for additional improvements and expansion of Wapo Dog Park. Initially, this dollar amount was taken from general fund, from the expenses. When Public Works came to me to ask me for, make their request for the mid-year budget adjustments, I looked at the various revenue sources that we have and I verified that these Wapo Park improvements and expansion are eligible for park impact fees use. And so I'm making the recommendation, instead of using general fund money, to use park impact fees to cover the cost of those improvements.
And may I ask a question? Is there a timeline on those improvements when, when we're looking at that?
They're already done.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. So the recommendation from Parks and Rec Commission was to do these improvements. It didn't designate which funding source it was going to come from, but when, when they made the suggestion or when they asked for the budget recommendation of general fund, common practices that we look for under other funding sources first, and since it's eligible, that was my recommendation.
Thank you.
For recreation, so these are several different increases to the recreation budget. The first two, the banking fees and online transaction fees, those are specifically due to an increase in our online enrollment in our classes, which is great. The next line item for the after-school enrichment program, this is an increase in the contract amount with the St. Helena Unified School District. The increase in revenues were already accounted for in the fiscal year 20 budget, but we did not account for the offsetting expenses. The next four items, the part-time salary, overtime, FICA, Medicare and SDI, those are all budget increases directly related to staffing for Jingle All the Way. So the total amount for recreation is 53,469 in recommended budget increases. And that is offset by the, the fund balance and then the, the recommended revenue increases. For wastewater impact, so this is the offsetting 15% of those other items, so instead of coming from the wastewater fund, we're actually going to take it from wastewater impact fee funds. So again, the general maintenance of the wastewater facilities, costs associated with the cleanup of the wastewater treatment plant, and then shared cost of the capital improvement for the purchase of a new side-by-side utility vehicle. Which, and by vehicle, we mean it's not a truck or a car, it's more of a little off-road one-person vehicle. Onto our cares and leak adjustments. So for our cares program for Q2, we currently have 98 participants, so it went down from 99 participants for the Q1. And the total amount that we spent in Q2 is $11,193. For our leak adjustments for Q2, so this is our second quarter of our leak adjustments under our new policy, which allows for non-residential and also caps the dollar amount, which is, we've really, that's really kind of helped our, our budgeting a little bit. So for Q2, we had 278 excess units of water, which totaled $1,854 in leak adjustments. There were 10 leaks and out of those 10 leaks, nine of them were for residential properties. And that concludes my PowerPoint. The council action tonight is to receive and file the Q2 report and then adopt a resolution approving the recommended budget adjustments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any initial, the council?
I have a question and I don't want to upset the numbers for tonight, but just for clarification, the litigation costs being charged to the water fund, does that relate to the litigation outside the city?
Yes, it does.
I sort of question whether our water customers should be paying that? And whether their rates should be used for that litigation? And whether going forward, it should maybe be considered a general fund obligation? It has nothing to do with providing water in the city?
Yeah, I'd need to recuse myself if we're going to...
That's all I have to say about it, but just going forward, I, I'd just like some analysis of whether that should continue to be the practice.
And that's, yeah, maybe a policy issue related to the water.
I gotta recuse myself, you're gonna talk about it.
Can I ask, it's a general water question, not related to a specific incident.
I guess we probably shouldn't get involved in detailed conversation about the litigation right now. What, what I can say is that we could work with staff's office to come back with the discussion of, of how we allocate the cost for litigation, this specific litigation or litigation generally, and, and develop a policy to that effect.
I think it's a worthwhile thought, Ms. Coburnstein. Any other thoughts from the council? Mr. Newtonson?
This is actually a question for both the finance director and the public works director. I am concerned about lost revenues in the wastewater and water funds. And I would just, it's not a question, more of a comment that we need to kind of keep on track of that. You know, if we hit in a margin, we're not getting any rain, I mean, the season, I mean, to me, I think the season's almost over. So we've had these concerns in the past where people conserve, we have, our community is able to do that. And, and that results in less income to those funds. And so we'll have to look at that. And I guess the question I have is, could we potentially wait on transferring the settlement monies from the wastewater, I guess, I don't know what that fund's called, but into the CIP, depending on circumstances? Or is that already programmed and does that affect other potential grants or anything like that? The $1.15 million, could, could we just keep that for a while in that fund or?
Yes, it can.
I don't, go ahead, yeah.
Eventually, it will be transferred over to the CIP fund and that will take a council action for us to be able to transfer the money over to the CIP fund. So yes, we can still live with it in there. The plan of finance for the wastewater treatment plant included utilizing the 1.15 million for, to go directly towards the cost of the plant. But it can definitely, it can definitely stay there. City manager Presswich and I have talked about some other strategies to implore if, if it looks like in March that we're getting close, because I'm, I'm looking very closely at that fund as well. So there are some other strategies that we can implore as it gets closer, like let's say March, if we know it's getting very close, that we can internally make a determination of, you know, freezing any spending for that particular fund with, within reason, without staff costs, obviously you couldn't.
Thank you. I think that's a very astute observation and very timely to make sure if we're going into a conservation mode, we know that when we conserve water, we're buying, our community's buying less water from the city, so there's less money coming into the system. And so I think recognizing ahead of time is prudent, very prudent. So thank you for pushing forward on that. Mr. Newtonson?
So I want to go back to, by the way, thank you, Ms. Metz, this is a very comprehensive and helpful set of pieces of information here. If we could look at page 17 on the park impact fees, excuse me, for $16,000, which was for the Wapo Park. It was discussed yesterday, Parks and Rec Committee, about how, it's sort of like picking a scab. You know, for years, there was money in that fund and they kept asking for it to be spent and it was never spent. And, you know, tennis courts, other ways to improve our parks. And then the only time the council, a prior council had actually spent funds was for the redo of the bathrooms in Lyman Park. And they hadn't asked the Parks and Rec Commission to approve it, it hadn't gone through sort of that proper process. And yes, they want the Wapo Park, they were happy with the changes. Clayton came to the meeting yesterday, very happy with the changes to Wapo Park, but it's a negative surprise. It's like picking the scab for like, oh, it's going to come out of the park impact fees? We didn't actually discuss that, we didn't approve that, it didn't go to council, it wasn't part of our purview. I just want us to respect the people that we've appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission. And so when there are park impact fees that are proposed to be spent, I would like those guys to have a, have a word. They really would like it. And I think it's, you know, we've mandated them, they're spending their free time to help us create, come up with great programs and to look after our parks and it'd be great to respect them by, when we want to use park impact fees, ask their opinion. So, that's it.
Any other questions from the council, thoughts? So I'm going to open it up to public comment, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Do we have any final thoughts here? Ms. Coburnstein? Okay, with that, the recommendation is that the, the city council approve a resolution approving mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2019-20. Is there a motion?
I'm, that we, we approve the resolution. Oh, sorry. I move that we approve the resolution approving mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2019 to 20. Second?
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Newtonson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
So we will move on now to item 10.5. This is consideration of committing additional funds in the amount of $54,050 to fund a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the Napa Valley Vine Trail design from Calistoga to St. Helena. And this is prepared by Ms. Smithys.
Thank you. If you may recall, on September 24, city council authorized a resolution with, for funding the Napa Valley Transportation Authority for the Napa Valley Vine Trail design from Calistoga to St. Helena for an amount not to exceed 241,000. The project is currently under design by RSA Plus, under NVTA, Napa Valley Transportation Authority's supervision. Funding for the work is coming from the Measure T Class 1 Equivalent Fund. And recently, it was brought to the Napa Valley Transportation Board for discussion on January 15th, that Caltrans was going to require a $440,000 design review of the project that wasn't considered at the time in September or brought to our attention. The, the board passed it and the executive director then worked with Caltrans to reduce the total cost to a $235,000 amount, which equates to a $54,000, $54,050 match for the city of St. Helena. They, there's such a short amount of time, they don't want to move forward and commit to Caltrans until they have the county of Napa, St. Helena and Calistoga on board with committing these additional funds. We can use Measure T Equivalent Funds from the future, so funds that will have to be obligated into the future of the, the 25 years of Measure T funds, that we can use that forward, so we're not having to pay extra general fund money. In, in later years, it can all be as a cumulative amount from the city's share. We don't know at this time how much money it's going to be, if there's going to be construction costs on top of the design, but this is a one-time amount that Caltrans will work on a time material amount. And then if, if all the jurisdictions agree to moving forward with this pot of funds, NVTA will come back with an amendment to their agreement and that we would bring back to council for approval and adoption.
Thank you. Is there initial council questions? Seeing none, I will open it to the public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Any final thoughts? And if not, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion, direction to staff. Okay, so I think certainly I'm supportive of moving forward with this in terms of direction, if there's support from the rest of the council.
Yeah, I mean, you have, there's a paragraph in here, it said, even though your, the recommended action is discussion, you actually have a paragraph saying it's recommended the city council approve the additional funding needed. So I'm, I'm willing to make a motion that we approve this additional $54,050. I think it's better to have a motion here, don't you? Or no?
Sure.
Yeah, I just think it's clear for the record.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Dory?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Newtonson?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. I want to thank everybody for being here and we will see you next time. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a little disconnect.